In this world with liberty and justice for all.
I think we're going right to you Superintendent Gallagher. Great. So I guess just for those of you at home or who have not looked at the agenda sheet, so we're going to have a budget presentation and then there'll be a time for public comment as it relates to the budget hearing.
All right, well, thank you all very much. We'll get into the budget book with Mr. Little Hale right after this, but I just kind of want a few slides just to let everyone know, a little summary and overview of kind of where we're at, at this point. So as you all know, this was our budget process, the foundational budget was presented on February 7th. Step two for us was the aspirational budget presentation where we were here on March 3rd. Step three and four is still ongoing and that's with the leadership team and our deliberations going through our budget. We've updated school committee on March 7th, 21st, and then today is our public hearing for more iterations and more ideas, you know, as we prepare for April 26th. And just a reminder, that's going to be at the Newbury Port High School. The 26th and Vice Chair will be talking about that change. So it will be televised at the high school on 26th. But once again, as part of our process as a leadership team, we continue to analyze our staffing patterns, reallocating funds, examining our operational budget items. We incorporate at this, for this budget, I think a 1% contractual obligations. By no means is contracts completed yet, but usually a 1% is a good placeholder for across the district. And then we continue to evaluate our funding sources. As you all know, we've applied for other competitive grants and we're still awaiting some of those funds. So that's been our process throughout. And just a summary of the investments or the increases, as you all know, you've seen this multiple times, I won't read through all of these, but district-wide, there's the ask and the aspirational needs of the district, the high schools aspirational asks for this year, the NOC aspirational, Mullen, and then also the Brezner Hand. So as we continue with our proposed, remember, I think a few weeks ago, we were at a 6.3, but with some of the reallocating in funding, we went from a 6.3, we're down to a 5.9 increase for the city allocations and the overall budget at this point is at a 3.1. Remember, that is not with the negotiated contracts down the line. So this is where we're at and as I said, we will continue to work on our budget between now and the 26th. So as we wanted to show once again, our enrollment over the past 10 years is pretty much the same. We are fluctuating between 100 students every year. I think the difference between the students from 2009 to the students today, as we've, I think, discussed in a lot of our budget presentations of the needs of our students, and I would also say general society are a lot different today. You know, as we all know, with anxiety and depression, with a lot of challenges for students and families today, the needs are a lot different. And what we wanted to show here with just this changing demographics, so as you can see, our populations of needs have been increasing over the years and that includes our low-income, economically disadvantaged, our first language that is not English families, English language learners, and then students with disabilities. So you can see although our enrollment has maintained pretty much steady, I think the challenges of our students and our families, you know, continue to increase. And that's why you'll see, I think, as part of our budget and we also tied in to the portrait of a graduate, but the needs of the district, we feel in this aspirational budget, we're addressing all of the needs of our students and families as we're heading into next year. So at this point, we'll bring up Mr. Little Hale and we can kind of go through the budget book that you all have received, which includes all of the aspirational asks. And I know we've been saying, Mr. Little Hale's been doing a lot of work, really tying our budget into Munis, which is a lot easier program to operate. And the other piece that Mr. Little Hale's been doing is re-categorizing a lot of the staff and personnel. For example, I'll give you one example where we would have one line item for staffing, it would say counselors, but what Mr. Little Hale's done is he broke out the type of counselors. So you have guidance counselors, you have adjustment counselors, and then you have social workers. So as you go through the budget, by reclassifying, you'll see a zeroed out in one area of counselors, but they'll also show up in another area of the line items. But Mr. Little Hale can explain that a little bit more with the work.
There goes my comments, but anyway.
I take all the good comments and all the negative comments, we'll give those to you.
I did want to make, want to make a few comments about the budget itself. Lord knows, I don't, I don't think we all want to spend going line by line through it and hoping we can avoid that and keep, you know, the questions which we may have. What I've tried to do for this year's budget is make a format similar to what you've been looking at for the past X number of years in terms of both the layout of the schedules as well as the number of schedules, but I've also included some new schedules at the back that I'll get to in a little bit. I do realize when you look at it, it is kind of hard to read because the first third is taken up by words instead of numbers, so I'm considering I'll probably flip that to landscape instead of portrait for the final one, so it's a little bit easier to read. One of the challenges in doing this is that last year's budget had, last year for fiscal year 2021, there was the SR2 money, but it was never integrated into the budget itself. So I tried this year to integrate those numbers into what you're seeing tonight. I will tell you, I've not been, have not done a great job with that so far. It's one of the things I still need to work on. As a result, if you go through it, if you really go through it, you're going to see some perhaps weird changes like high number last year and a low number this year. It's because I haven't allocated all those expenses out correctly. So, you know, you might see some of those, especially the non-personnel lines. If you could hold off on that, I'd rather fix it so that we have something that makes a little more sense to look at. Trying to think what else we have here, a couple of things, FTEs. I know that came up the, a couple of weeks ago, how many FTEs do we have for buildings and grounds? Should be able to answer that one. But also in just terms of reconciling FTEs, our structural assistance are always a challenge because we've got a lot of them and they tend to go from .65 to .8 to . whatever it is, trying to make sure we get that right. And just before we get over here, there was a observation or comment made about a line. This whole thing is built out of Excel and pivot tables, so if you try to divide by zero in Excel, if last year the line was zero and this year it has money, the response to, the answer you get is, because you divided by zero, is, you know, divide by zero error. So I went in and changed the formula to put it at zero. But, you know, on further reflection, that doesn't make sense, so that will get changed in the upcoming, the next version where if any line was zero last year and has any money in it this year, it would now be 100% increase, because that makes sense. If it was $100,000 last year and it's zero this year, it's a decrease of 100%. We'll just do it the same way. So those are just some of the, some of the feedback that I've gotten and I'll be glad to get more feedback in terms of making it easier for folks to look at and to utilize. In terms of some of the presentations, as the superintendent said, one of the things we did is we did break out the guidance line. Right now, I've only broken that out for this year. So for example, if you look at the Brezner Hand, you'll see that last year under guidance, they had two FTEs for $130,000. This year, it's zero, because further down the page, you're now going to see special ed guides, because those are actually adjustment counselors, where last year it was zero, now there's numbers this year. I will fix that, as I call geography issues, so that we'll have a consistent year-over-year comparison to do. Just try to clean, try to break it out a little better for folks. I don't need to talk about that. There are still some positions that have been, for lack of a better phrase, coded incorrectly this year, they're being charged off to lines. We have about seven or eight IAs that for reasons I don't understand, we've been charging them off to a professional salary line instead of a, an IA line, so we need to fix that. Unfortunately, right now in the budget, they're showing up in the professional lines, so this especially impacts special ed, so it may look like we've got a lot more teachers than we really do. So keep that in mind as you look at that, because again, the IAs are always a bit of a challenge for us. And other than that, there's still some more cleanup work that I need to do, making sure that I've got all of the staff assigned in the correct places in terms of the budget. Again, in terms of the book itself, the schedules should be pretty much what you're used to seeing, I've just kind of made it look a little bit different. So your first one is your, I'll call your uses and sources of funds, so that would be the first page of it, also the breakdown between salary and expenses. And then beyond that, for each school, we have the breakdown by program. And then once you go through that, there's a second schedule that shows the summary by program. And so that's consistent for the five cost centers, which are the four schools and district-wide, just as we've been presenting in the past. What I have added in the back, if you are looking at it and go all the way back beyond district-wide or system-wide, there are a couple new schedules. One of the things I think is helpful for folks is to see some of the programs all together. So for example, right now or previous budget versions, if you try to see your special ed costs, you had to go to each individual cost center and add it up. So now, for example, we've got a schedule that says special education, this is the entire budget for special education across the district. So you have that, so you can see the total cost for that. Also did well for the assistant superintendent, the reason, one of the reasons was, wanted to highlight the fact that we've invested a lot of extra money this year in ELL because of the increase in the students coming in. And also that curriculum was one of the areas that had a lot of things taken out of last year's budget and assigned over to SR2, so I tried to move some of that money back. Again, not as successfully as I would have liked at this point, but that will get fixed. And then finally, there's a third schedule for buildings and grounds, again, so you can see, see, God, Steve Burgholm's budget in one place rather than trying to look across the five different schools. So to answer the question, I think that came up one or two meetings ago, currently Steve has 22 FTEs and his aspirational budget has 23 FTEs, because he's got that one add for the assistant groundskeeper. So this, all this detail ties back to this. It's all the support of this. So, I mean, I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time getting into the details, I think you'll get some questions, we can go over that, and I'll be happy to take your questions and have the superintendent answer them. Oh, and I, I'll also say, I would like feedback if there are things that you'd like to see. Again, because the way this is built, it's just with one huge Excel spreadsheet, I could really, I won't say slice and dice, but show the data in many different ways. So if there's something that I've never thought of or you would like to see it, let me know. It's easy enough to create a schedule, because it's all right there. And just as you also should know by now, I will not be printing this out, it will be PDF, because if there's a mistake, it's easy enough to throw away PDF and we're not killing a couple of trees every time I have to go reprint a page and then send it back out. So I prefer PDF, I can get it out faster and I can make corrections or changes as we need to, so. That's my, that's my one minor contribution to trying to be green.
Do we have questions? Oh, yes.
Oh, I forgot, one more thing, sorry, excuse me. As the superintendent said, there is no, there are, there is no money in here yet for any of the contract settlements, so the number you see is not there. It does not include that. So we've got to keep that in mind as to what does that mean in terms of the bottom-line number when we get done.
So, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Little Hale, could you just detail the different positions with sped guidance and then regular guidance and the way you've broken it down?
Yeah, it's just as the superintendent said, we had one category called guidance.
Right.
And so we put anyone that was called guidance, whether they were a regular high school guidance counselor, or they were the...
I guess I'm just trying to find out. I understand all that. I actually drilled down on this and saw the superintendent before the meeting started. I just want to know, for instance, what positions are under special ed guidance and what positions are under guidance?
So under guidance would be the high school guidance director and I believe she's got their clerical staff and the regular guides counselors, which are three or four of them, is the college.
Yeah.
And so I think it's four. And then under the special ed guides are just, are the adjustment counselors and social workers. I'm going to work on breaking out the social workers as well, because when I do my year-end reporting, I have to break those things out, so I'm trying to get this to be broken out into the categories I need for year-end reporting as well. So I've got a vested interest in some of the, the way some of the data is displayed.
So it appears the aggregate of all those positions you mentioned is 10 FTEs?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. All right, and I'll look forward to hearing about that breakdown. I just was, because I know last year there was nine FTEs and a clerical position, and I was just curious where the FTE was added, because when I look at the...
It's part of the aspirational budget.
I don't see, which one is it then?
I believe it's...
We have math, science.
The NOC?
No.
I wanted to say...
I'm talking about the high school.
High school. We moved, Ed, Nancy corrected me for wrong, we moved up a adjustment counselor up to the high school this year from...
The Brez?
That's why. So that accounts for the increase at the high school. Sorry, I just understood.
No, no, that's all right, because I was just, like I say, I was trying to... Yeah, yeah. The Brez seems to show a reduction in 2.2 FTEs from 22 to 23, FY22 to FY23.
One of the challenges, I think you're probably all aware with special ed, is that as the needs change during the year, positions tend to move around, which drives the control freak business manager crazy, because I'm trying to keep track of where everybody's ending up, so.
Right. And just as a school committee member, I just like to try to connect the dots, that's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Callahan.
Thanks. Mr. Little Hale, my question is about the 19% drop in technology. What did we get rid of to save 135 grand?
That's one of the problems where I loaded in SR2 money in there.
Okay.
That may, may not be correct.
So that may change.
So that may change.
It just seems like a large number to get rid of.
Yeah.
Well, remember, the part of SR2, we really allocated a lot of funding towards those one-time expenses.
Sure.
So they may show up last year, but now zeroed out because we know we're not going to need to purchase those things.
And that stands out most...
It's not programming, it'd be equipment.
Correct, it's more the equipment.
Okay.
You'll see that in the transportation section where in SR2, there's money to buy a van as well as some money for a A+ and things like that.
Yep.
It's a total of 130,000, that is not being repeated in next year's budget.
Correct.
So it looks like a big drop in transportation. I'll try to do a better job of highlighting the lines that have been impacted by SR2 in the next version.
Okay, thank you.
Great, well, Mr. Menon.
Yeah, Mr. Little Hale, I want to make sure that I understand this and I've, there are a lot of percentages in math, it's not my forte, let's say. In order to have a level service budget next year, what is the total percent increase that you expect, just to stick with level service?
Superintendent, could you go back to the overview? So if you go back to, we see level service total, it's 38.8, just a tad under 38.8 million to keep level service.
And what is that, what is the percentage increase from last year's budget to do that?
Overall, right now, it's a half percent increase overall.
Okay.
But again, we have to keep in mind, there's no contract settlement money in there.
Right.
So normally, it'd be another 2% or 3% on top of that.
I guess what I'm trying to make sure that I understand is, what's the amount for level service, understanding that every percent we add to a contract is 200,000, I get that, that piece isn't in there. And then I want to know the next step, which is the aspirational budget. So I think I'm just trying, in my head, I'm trying to figure out what is the total percentage that we're going to ask if we submit an aspirational budget? What's the percentage change?
Well, that's where, because the funding sources are shifting, as we talked about in previous presentations, the overall for the aspiration right now is 3.1%, but more of it, but it falls more heavily on the city side, because we've lost funding.
Right.
You know, we're losing the tuition for kindergarten, things like that. So while it's a 3.1% overall increase, the ask of the city is 5.9 in order to do the aspirational budget as it's presented.
Okay, that helps, thank you. And I also, just if I could offer a comment, I've seen a lot of these budgets over the years and I really appreciated, this one for some reason is just particularly clear to me, except where I get into math problems.
Well, then I've done something wrong if it's clear.
Yeah, yeah, no, it just, the way it's laid out makes a lot of sense to me and it's been very helpful. Can't vouch for the numbers, of course, but, but the sort of framework works for me.
And again, any other feedback, we're glad to take in terms. I want to give you folks something that is helpful to you.
Ms. Walker.
First thing I'd say, oh, good, here's the data, okay. The other, this is great, I appreciate the clarity of the, of the, or the effort you made to reorganize and clearly present the budget. I would just say that some of the information you talked about tonight about how positions were moved from one category to another, if you could footnote, or if there's a, if there's a footnoting, I love footnotes. So wherever we could do that, or if there's just a way to reference those comments to help explain that, I'm thinking.
That goes back to, I'm sorry to interrupt, turning it to landscape, I can now put a column in for comments.
Right, for notes, yeah.
Because if I try to do it right now, we won't be able to read anything.
Right, no, absolutely. And I'm thinking not just for us, but for public consumption, that's really helpful. The other thing I would just ask both you and the superintendent is, it was hard for me to draw parallels between the summary of investments that you highlighted in your, in your budget presentation and the budget itself. So if you're calling the position something different in the budget spreadsheet, I don't know, or whether I'm just not seeing those, like the cultural arts teacher, I couldn't find a direct corollary to that in the, in the Brezner Hand budget, and it may be just that it's called something different, or, so if you could just somehow figure out a way to clearly show the link, yeah, and that might be a footnote, I'd...
That was something we talked about this morning in terms of trying to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Because you're right, it's all buried in that aspirational line.
Yeah, I understand that. Those are my only comments at this point.
Great, Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to separate that out. Superintendent, am I correct that everything that the teachers asked for in the aspirational budget was included?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, so I guess that's my only concern, is that I think it's great that we were able to foster that kind of aspirational conversation this year. I do think it's our job now to kind of drill down on that a little bit, because I know there was a few positions that, you know, I wasn't necessarily sold on. And it's not that I don't think it would be great, but I do think once, because schools are 85% people, right, and we're working with ESSR, which will be gone essentially after, after this year, right, I mean, that's, it's part of our budget from there, from going on, and our enrollment has pretty much stayed the same, and we've been able to add a lot of positions, I would say, the last three years. I just hope we all kind of take a little bit closer look at that and hopefully prioritize which positions we think would have an immediate impact, because I do think some of them just, they were just, you know, something that they think could do well, but there's really no track record there of, you know, it was something that they just kind of came up with. So, like I said, I appreciate, you know, all the thought that went into it, especially at the building level, but I hope, I hope we all look at each of the positions, because, again, going forward, it's going to be, it's going to be on us, and once you have them, it's tough to make, it might make changes like that, so.
Mr. Menon.
Yeah, no, I, you know, to, to the mayor's point, I would also encourage us to remember that we're, we're, this is going to be our first sort of school year really, where we're looking at the impact of, if there was any learning laws, looking at the health and wellness impact, so I would have expected to see a budget that's got a bunch of different counselors or adjustment counselors with guidance, because we need to do that, you know, and that's just, it's more to me the nature of the pandemic and the impact it's had on kids, so.
Ms. Walker.
And I remembered another thing I was going to say. And to follow on the mayor's comments too, I, my anticipation is that we'll get the whole package at the final meeting, so that we, I mean, I think you're right, like, we do have to have that conversation about the positions, the justification, and the explanation that you've provided in previous meetings, so that we can, you know, really deliberate that. I also am anticipating, hopefully we'll get some public comment on the budget as well. I, my suggestion is related to the, what's driving some of the district investments, you had a slide about demographics, and the, the follow-on to that is not, it's not just the demographics are changing, because demographics can change all the, you know, that doesn't necessarily impact our schools. What's changing are the metrics and the analytics that you're using to gauge student progress is reflecting that there's, that we're not proceeding as we had in the past with the same resources. So I think, I think putting that in a different, maybe a different way, or following with the metrics that you're using to understand how maybe those demographic changes are impacting how, student performance, because I think that's what it comes down to. It's not whether or not we're getting different people, demographics are changing, it's how our students are performing and what their needs are overall and how those are changing, and we're needing to respond to that, not just because their demographics are changing. I think you understand my point.
Correct. And I, by no means is it people, it's the, I think it's the, the needs of our students today, and not just the Newbury Port, but across the Commonwealth, are a lot more significant than they were. I mean, as I said before, in previous, you know, budget presentations in 2009, 2010, we weren't talking about social-emotional learning. I mean, that was not even a topic, but what we started to see, I think in school districts, even before I got to Newbury Port, is, you know, basically what's happened in society trickles down into the schools, so that's where we started seeing a lot of mental health concerns across the board, regardless of, you know, someone's demographic. It's year to year, there are new challenges, I think for all of us. So with that being said, yes, that's why you're seeing a lot more adjustment counselors and supports within the schools to address those needs, so.
Yeah, and Madam Vice Chair, if I could just follow up, my point is just that, I don't doubt that, I think just showing what the metrics are that you're using to come to that conclusion, you know, what are, what are your indicators that are showing that social-emotional learning is a need now?
Correct.
Like, what, you know, I know you guys are using that, those metrics and you're applying them, but if we can see a snapshot of what you're using to base that on, I think that would be really helpful to explain the process overall.
Mr. Cole.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess related to Ms. Walker's comments, as I look at that graph of the change, change in demographics, I can't help but note the, I'll call it a hockey stick increase in students with disabilities, and if you, I guess, extrapolate those last few points, that's going to keep going unless we find some good interventions or some good programming. And I guess my follow-up question, maybe Ms. Koch can answer this. In terms of the alt-ed program that we have, I just saw that as being kind of level funded or the same funding as last year, is there a, is there a capacity that we have in that program? Like, how many students can it serve?
Right now, there are five students that are being served.
Okay.
And it will, we will decrease by one in July of next year, not this July, July of '23, and then in, and then another in November of '23. of twenty-three, and then in, and then in other, in November of twenty-three, and then, which, three, and then it will be another four years before we have any more. So I am actually working with another district to see if we can combine, and two districts have sent referrals for that program, so that's how I'm trying to build it, and make it sustainable.
So, do you feel like you have enough resources?
Right now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Or, when people speak from the audience, is it picked up on camera and recorded, and audio?
I am not certain about that.
Yeah, so it might be best if staff are responding.
It is not. It is not.
Okay, so it would be better if you were answering questions if you came up, I think.
Right. Thank you. Excellent point, Ms. Walker. So, I, if you want, if you don't mind, Nancy, just briefly reiterating, so we're capturing your comments, sorry about that.
She was chewing gum.
Will me ask a question again?
No, I, thank you. So, right now, yes, it is level funding, it is sustainable, right now, there are five students in the program, one will be aging out in July of twenty-three, and other in November of twenty-three, and then I am working with two other districts to bring students in, combine programs, and two other districts have, have referred students to that program. So, we're trying to keep it going, because it will be another four years before, there was a huge gap, so it'll be four years before another student will enter.
Is there any issue with transportation costs when you're combining with other schools like that?
No, because that's their cost, not ours.
Okay, gotcha, so they bring them?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a question for Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, what? Nancy, it's an observation. Stay right there, one more question.
Don't touch that dial. I noticed that special education funding has gone down, or the cost has gone down by two point five percent. Is that a result of some of these measures you have taken?
Yes, that is our goal.
Great. Any follow-ups, any other questions for Nancy, specifically? Yes?
Nothing, Nancy, no.
Oh.
Good job, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and just to, you know, reiterate, so that's, if you look at this, this budget this year, we are addressing, I think, special education, trying to do the in-district programming to address the needs of, I think, for, for all of our families, number one, so families don't have to seek out a district placement, so, and I want to credit Nancy. And the other piece, too, is, once again, this isn't just a Newbury Port concern, so we are working with other districts, and seeing if we can consolidate some of our resources to save costs, too. So, that's also behind the scenes, that's going on.
Great. Mr. Menon.
Yeah, Superintendent, I just sort of, I guess, want to hear the answer again. The, the introduction next year of free kindergarten, full day kindergarten, that isn't, you don't anticipate that is going to significantly change the number of students we're serving in kindergarten?
Correct.
So it's just going to, we're basically, our numbers?
We can maintain, correct, so that was one of the changes that, you know, with the cultural arts teacher, we were placeholding an additional kindergarten teacher, but working, you know, with the other schools and Ms. Appolito, so we're very comfortable on our kindergarten numbers going into next year, and that freed up that spot to, you know, think outside the box a little bit, and address some of the cultural competency work that we've been talking about for the district, so.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have any additional questions? Is there anyone here with public comment, or questions regarding the budget? No, so I guess we, we're going to adjourn, and then?
Can I have a motion to adjourn the business, not the business meeting, but the budget hearing? Can I have a second? Second, is that used to call?
For discussion purposes?
Sure.
Question?
Yep.
If people were not able to come tonight, is there a mechanism through which they, what's the best mechanism for them to write comment on the budget? Is it through emailing the school committee?
I would say an email to the SC at Newbury Port, just our district email.
Okay.
You can find our email and all of our individual emails on the district website.
Thank you.
All in favor to adjourn? Actually, I was, I was going to say one more thing real quick, just a reminder, for those of you who didn't make comments at home, you know, you've got one more chance here at the end of the month to come here and make a comment, so it's at April twenty-sixth, is that what you said?
Yes.
At the high school. So, all those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The budget hearing is now adjourned, and now we will call the business meeting to order. Mrs. Kennedy, I think you need to take attendance again, please.
Okay. Mayor Ridden?
I am still here.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, here.
Ms. Balding?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
All right, thank you, I will now turn it over to Vice Chair Hall.
Okay, do we have any public comment as it relates to items on the business meeting agenda? And seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, no minutes this evening, so warrants, Mr. Callahan, whenever you're ready.
Yes, we have two warrants, I moved the following name bills of the Newbury Port Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate three hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and one cent to be approved and forwarded to the City Auditor for payment, there are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Was that it? No additional warrants? Okay.
That's it.
NHS Student Representative Report.
All right, so first, congratulations to L. Melora Sockmore, who recently received the Mass Arts Summer Studios Art Scholarship. This is quite an accomplishment, as the program recognizes creative artists who demonstrate curiosity and passion about a life in art. Recently, Newbury Port Youth Services and the Beacon Coalition announced their Asset Builder Awards, which celebrates people and organizations in the community who support the development of healthy assets for young people. The youth award went to Olivia Di Ambrosio, and the district's entire nursing team was recognized with the Prevention Champions Award. Two weekends ago, a beach cleanup was organized by the Friends of the Parker River National Wildlife Refuge. The staff from the refuge was extremely impressed by the large number of students who participated in the event, and their thank you letter was a tribute to the community engagement our students took on.
And then from the NOC, the NOC has wrapped up their March Madness Spirit Days. For this, students participated in various activities to earn points for their respective homerooms. The winning home will be announced later this week. Starting after April vacation, the NOC Mills School will be starting a school council, a student council, to help promote student voice in school decisions. And from the NOC Theater Department, on Wednesday, April sixth, the cast and crew will be doing three special twenty-five minute viewings of the production I Hate Shakespeare. The show times for grade six are on April sixth, and then on, at eight-thirty, and then grade seven at nine-thirty, and grade eight at ten-thirty. And then their full evening shows on April seventh at seven PM, April eighth at seven PM, and a Saturday matinee starting at two PM. That's it.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we have the wellness policy revision, Ms. Balding, do you want to introduce that, and then I think?
Yes.
We're going to have Lauren come up?
Yes.
Yeah. Ms. Lauren McDonald is here from the district to help explain the, she is the Director of Health Services, and she is here to explain the new wellness policy that was revised, and we are having a first reading tonight.
Hi. My phone, sorry. So, we, we have a wellness advisory committee that is mandated by the state, so we've been meeting, we had two meetings already, and we looked, took a look at the wellness policy, which is what we're, one of the major things that the wellness committee does. So, the committee took a look at it, we all kind of took a look at our sections, there was a lot of things in the policy that don't happen anymore in the district, and there were things that were added that actually are, are happening in regards to, you know, wellness and, and nutrition. So, did you want me to go through all the changes? Do you guys want me to?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. So, the biggest one is the, the committee name, so in the, you know, the state regulation on this, it's called a wellness advisory committee, so we just sort of decided to make that, that change. So everywhere that it was, I forget what it actually was called. Yeah, yeah, health and?
Wherever it was, health and wellness.
Health and wellness, we made it Wellness Advisory Committee. If we look on page one, there was a notation that the foods at school provisions was going to be implemented by a certain date, and it has been fully implemented, so we changed that. Then on page two, under nutrition guidelines for all foods, so I had Pam Kayley, our Food Services Director, who is on the team, take a look at all of the nutrition and lunch and breakfast information, so she corrected everything and made some changes to those policies. So she added review as, reviewed, that these district guidelines will be reviewed as needed. She also changed, these shall be reviewed as needed by the Wellness Advisory Committee in conjunction with the Food Services or other designee, I think she added other designee, because sometimes that happens by other people. And recommendations will be forwarded to the superintendent as needed, I believe we, we put as needed in there. Then page three is, there were no changes. Page four has a couple of little changes, under physical activity and healthy choices education, and that's at the top of the page, it continues on to this page, it, on the top of this page, the second bullet down, it used to say water fountains, and now we changed it to the water dispensers located throughout the schools. And then the next bullet, recommendations will then be forwarded to the Wellness Advisory Committee, so this is, the committee can actually go and take a look at cafeterias, see what maybe needs to be changed, or if there's anything, and particularly, we kind of use this this year, when we moved back tables in the NOC to accommodate for COVID. So things like that, we, the Wellness Advisory Committee can actually go in, take a look at the changes, and recommend some changes, so we did that, and we had, Mike Allard, actually, from our Medical Advisory Board, came around with me to all the cafeterias, and we, we took a look at what changes we needed for this year. Under school lunch program, we added, the top bullet, we added breakfast and lunch, because now we have a breakfast and lunch program. The third bullet, she added meeting state annual hourly requirements, and I think that was just a wording change, and that more accurately describes what happens. And there was a bullet, so I had Joanne Yell take a peek at this, and she highlighted everything, and actually, I probably should have had her do that before I sent it to you, and I'm sorry, that's my bad, but there was a bullet deleted here, and there was also a paragraph deleted at the end, which is added back in now, so I'll send you the updated policy. This bullet in particular was deleted because the breakfast program was expanded, so that's going to continue to be gone, because it was saying that we should expand the breakfast program, and now we do have the breakfast program. And the next page, nothing, no changes. Next page, this is where we changed all the programming, so we removed programming under the youth risk behavior, the fifth bullet down, supporting intervention programs, so we removed the programs that we no longer have, and we added in the programs that we actually have now. So some of those are programs you may know about, social emotional learning in the elementary schools, social emotional and behavioral universal screening that we do, U.S.A.F. Social Emotional Learning and Wellness, it's at the high school, the NAN Project is now taught at the high school, health and prevention program at the high school, substance use prevention education at all levels, ESPTR screening, we do that at the high school and the middle school, signs of suicide is middle, high, and, I don't know why that says senior year, but, and then reentry transition programs, so those were all added in, or changed basically to accurately reflect what's going on in the, in the schools. The second to last bullet on, under youth risk behavior, we changed the Comprehensive School Health Services Grant, because in the policy, it was the old grant, the Essential School Health Services, and now we're under the Comprehensive School Health Services Grant. And the next bullet, maintaining a publicly accessible website, I think we just, there was, it said something about having a health and wellness website, we're actually part of the district website, so we changed that. And then under Wellness Advisory Committee, co-chaired by the superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Maria Appolito, and myself, and then we changed the members of the team to also accurately reflect what we had, there were some physicians in there that we didn't even actually have, so changed those, so they are accurately reflecting all of us. And then, the here, at the end, is where we added back the last paragraph, the superintendent shall annual a report, and I'm not actually sure this actually happens or not, I'm sure there's a, there's a report that's made, I could not find one in the doc, you know, all the documents that I was given, and then number five, we added back, provide an annual report, so the wellness committee will provide the superintendent with a report in May, and he'll in turn provide it to you. So, that is it. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Yeah, if, the only suggestion I would make, I'm fine with policy changes themselves, the only suggestion I would make is that you, you and I may know what ESPTRs are, but the community is not.
Spell it out.
So, yeah, so if you could go back and change the acronyms to?
Absolutely.
So, I think that would be very helpful for everyone.
Sure.
But I think the policy changes make a lot of sense.
Yep. Mr. Callahan?
Thank you. It won't come as a surprise to anybody that I don't like that ice cream is sold in the middle school. So I guess my question is really about the wording in the policy, school level policy shall limit, limits both of these food, high sugar, fat, sodium, food beverage, and inclusion, limit to the following, cakes, cookies, cupcakes, donuts, full-fat dairy products, ice cream, and pies. So what is the district actually doing to limit those foods if any kid with the cash is able to go buy it?
That is a good question.
Thank you.
And I guess this ice cream at the middle school has been going on for a long, long time, it's kind of tradition.
I've been mad about it for five years.
What's that?
Even back in my day.
It's like tradition? So this is what I'm told.
We've allowed tradition in Newbury Port, I don't think that's a good one.
Certainly, it is something that we can discuss, that we have, actually, our next meeting is Thursday, so I'll bring that up.
I brought, I'm sorry, I brought up in the past that those things, being able to, kids being able to buy certain à la carte items should be an opt-in, not an opt-out, and there's always been pushback on that. I don't like it, I think it should be an opt-in, for parents to say, yes, my child's allowed to buy X, not, they're not allowed to buy, and that may well be a thing with chart wells, and with their, how their system's set up, but I'm sure with enough talking to, they would be willing to look into changing that. That's really about it. Thank you.
If, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
If parents wanted to learn more about the Wellness Advisory Committee, or review this policy, where would they go?
They can, they can, so it's on, it's, well, we're, we're changing. They can, so it's on, it's, well, we're changing the website. We're changing the website. Everything's kind of moving over.
But for now, if people want to learn more, where would they go?
They can contact myself.
Okay.
And there was a bullet in, on the website, not sure if it's still there or not, because things are changing, but.
So, this policy we're reviewing is not currently posted anywhere, but will be?
It is, it is posted.
Oh, it is?
It's posted in, under the school committee. And actually, it's posted on my website as well.
Just within the policy handbook? Okay. There was something at the beginning that made me think it was.
It's not labeled.
It's on, it's on the health.
It's not within our handbook, it's in one of the links at the bottom of that page. But we're cleaning that page up.
Okay.
So, stay tuned.
Yeah, it's there, and it's also linked on the health and nursing page on the website. And they are welcome to join us. We welcome parents, teachers, school committee members, Brian Combs.
I was gonna say, I thought it was on.
Yeah, you're on it.
See you Thursday.
We'll see you Thursday.
Great, that's helpful, thank you.
I just have an edit on page four.
Yep.
You know, where it says school lunch program. I mean, just because breakfast is mentioned so much throughout it, I would just change it to school breakfast and lunch program.
School breakfast and lunch.
I don't know.
Sure.
Makes sense if we're talking about breakfast there.
Okay. Ms. Walker?
My suggestion in the future is that we do this as a track changes document with red lines versus, and I'm not putting that on you, so maybe there's a way we can just get the original and show, so we don't have to go back and forth between the two.
Right.
I appreciate your explanation. That was really helpful.
And we did do some highlights on the changes just recently, so that's.
Yeah, I think the red line would help, though, because it would show what the existing is and what we're changing. So, if there's any way we can do that, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. I see what I was looking at, thinking of in the opening paragraph here. It says it intentionally does not mirror the style of other policy documents and is intended to be a living document. So, that would kind of go along with what you're saying about keeping it kind of flexible.
Right.
Okay. Were there any?
Yeah, I wasn't actually saying keep it flexible. I'm just saying, when we vote on this next time, I appreciate having all the changes in one place and show what's getting deleted and what's getting added on one document. And I think we can do that through, with a red line, simple red line version.
Yeah, I can do that for you.
Yeah.
I guess right now, it's just a PDF, there's no Word version.
We have a Word version.
Yeah, and I have, I have the.
I mean.
Online, there isn't, yeah. We don't post Word documents online.
Sometimes.
Okay.
So, is that something we could anticipate for when this comes before us for a second read, that it would be redlined, a little more clear what those changes are?
Yeah, and I'm happy to help. Whoever needs to help with that, I'm happy to help.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Stone.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the 2022, 2023 school calendar. I'm just gonna scroll down to it. Okay, here we go. Someone prepared to just make a motion to get things rolling here?
I move that we support the draft number two, calendar documents submitted by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion.
Could we just explain what changed since draft one, which I believe was presented at the last meeting?
Yeah, I think I could do that. Do that, and then superintendent, please chime in if I've missed anything. We had essentially an error where early release was listed for November 1st, thinking that was election day, but it's actually November 8th. So, we bumped that a week so that it's aligned with election day. The other change is in December, instead of having vacation days on the 22nd and the 23rd of December, there's now a full school day on the 22nd and an early release on the 23rd. What that does is it allows us to have the last day of school earlier. If you look down to June, now our planned last day is Tuesday, the 13th, whereas on the first version, it was Thursday, the 15th, leaving very little room for the typical number of snow days that we have in a year. You know, the rationale being that way, we're not going to get bumped, hopefully, beyond the Juneteenth holiday into Tuesday or Wednesday of the following week. Did I miss anything? Okay.
Perfect.
So, questions, comments?
I just, I mean, I appreciate you making the switches. I mean, it does give us that cushion. You know, you just never know what kind of winter you're gonna have, and, you know, I like, again, I always think, you know, more days at the beginning of the year are much more valuable than I think, you know, towards the end of the year. So, I appreciate you making the switch.
Nothing else?
I would just say maybe in the future, this is not necessarily calendar-related, but I think we maybe did this a couple of years ago, but maybe, you know, having some sort of presentation maybe towards the end of the year, or even the beginning of next year of, you know, what the professional development plan is for the year, for the district, so people could know, like, you know, like, we're having these half-days, this is why we're having them, these are the things that we're gonna address throughout the year. So, it looks like Lisa Marie's smiling at me, I knew she'd like that. Just so that people know, like, where we're going and where we're trying to go and what we're trying to get from it throughout the year, I think would be helpful.
Just let everyone know, Ms. Polito's already, I think you guys, next year mapped out. There you go.
She's smiling over there.
No doubt.
Are we ready? No other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're voting present, please.
Gotcha, thank you. Mr. Callahan is voting present.
There was no ice cream days in there.
I know. We get the supply right there.
Okay, so, the next thing we're looking at is actually this year's calendar, a couple necessary revisions. So, if you want to just go down to the next slide there.
I move that we accept the revisions as proposed by the superintendent.
Second.
Hey, discussion? I'm happy to explain.
Yeah, do we do this when we have a projected last day change because of weather? Do we ever go back and vote?
I was asked to do this, just for transparency. But, yeah, so, it's simply that we now have a better picture of when our projected last day will be, now that winter is over. And so, it was listed as the 15th, June 15th, and now we have it on Friday, the 17th, and hopefully, it will hold there as our last day. The pre-K on June 10th is unchanged, they don't have state requirements for the number of days, so they don't shift. But kindergarten did shift, and they're now on June 14th. So, they shifted a couple of days, just as the rest of the district shifted, the two days that we had for snow days.
Thank you.
So, that's it. And then, superintendent, I don't know if it's even worth mentioning, there was some note about an early release, but that doesn't affect families. That early release coming up, that was just, yeah. So, I think that's it. Were there any other questions there? Ms. Walker?
Only that the footnote at the bottom says something about voting on April 4th, 2021. And I think it's.
Oops. That should say 2022.
And just to follow up on Mr. Callahan's question, if we're not required to vote on this, can this just be an informational item? I mean, it just seems like, why would we vote on something we're not required to vote on?
I don't think we should have to vote on this.
Yeah.
It was already, it was already in there as a possible last.
I do, I do think it's helpful to have it in the packet and just update people when we can, but if we're voting on something we don't have to vote on, I get a little, I just think that's unnecessary, if possible.
That's, that's fine.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, that works. But let's just make sure that we get that, that the year corrected to 2022. Good catch. So, I think we're all set with that. We're on to subcommittee updates, starting with Mr. Callahan, finance.
We have not met since the last school committee meeting, but we will be on, I believe it's April 14th, is that, is that right? It seems like it's right to me.
I know it's next Thursday.
Thursday.
That's right.
Yeah, the 14th. Yeah, okay. That's that.
Great. Ms. Balding, policy?
We also have not met, but we will be meeting next Monday, April 11th, in the NOC library at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. And Mr. Menon, joint ed.
Joint ed will be meeting tomorrow. I think the conversation is gonna center around some questions that were forwarded to us by city council members about the budget. That about covers it, right?
I'm sorry.
Do you know if we have a location for that meeting?
You know, that's a really good question. Yeah, I haven't seen one posted.
Okay.
As for a vote on the motion to accept the revisions, I mean, they made a motion, but I didn't hear anything about it being passed.
Right, so, we decided it wasn't necessary to vote on the modifications, and so that was withdrawn.
All right, I'm sorry.
No worries. I think we are ready for the assistant superintendent's report. Come on up to the mic.
So, I'm here just to give an update on our SISL committee, and SISL is Curriculum Instruction and Student Life Committee. We met on March 28th. As always, we started with a wonderful presentation by our students. We had for our middle school representative, Colby Keefe, and he presented about things happening, the third trimester starting. He advertised the play, I Hate Shakespeare, that's coming out, that they've been working on since October. He was very proud to talk about that. And then we have Olivia Di Ambrosio, who's our high school rep, who actually did a presentation that evening as well. So, she talked about MCAS for the sophomores, and that the, during the MCAS proctoring, the seniors and juniors were able to have college visits, so they made good use of that time. So, that was great. Then we had our administrative team. We have a elementary representative, which is Jamie Sokolowski, as well as Mike Monroe. And they talked about the Read-a-Thon going on, and they brought up how the mayor led the parade of characters, and they were all very excited about that, as well as they had school safety week, where they invited community members, including several police officers and firefighters from the community, to join them. And then talked about how we recently have had our foundation's professional development, as well as our MyView professional development, and the MyView is focusing on small group instruction. At the middle school and high school, they talked about the development of a student leadership council that they're very excited about at the NOC, and this is to increase student voice. So, they come to the table with ideas about the cafeteria and dress code policy, et cetera. They also had a spirit week up at the high school that was spearheaded by the student council. That's also in the presentation in your packet. So, Olivia went on, and I was just so proud of her. I was one who actually nominated her for that Asset Builder Award, what I think she deserved so, so much. But she actually asked, can I present at SISL? So, you know, how often do you have it that our students want, you know, to step forward and do that? I mean, I'm nervous doing this right now, so I won't ask you to have me come up here and talk. But she just did such a wonderful job, and she really talked about, which I thought was kind of genius, how they took the student council, and because they had so many students who wanted to be involved, instead of making it like just groups of kids coming together, they actually broke it out into two groups. So, they have the Clipper Block Group, and then they have the Grade Rep Council that has 10 students from every grade level, so 40 students on the councils. And they all just like work together, doing different tasks throughout the high school, and some great student leadership. So, that's fantastic. And then last but not least, we had Krista Piscios, who's the EL coordinator, and she did a presentation, very timely for us right now, around our EL program, and how this year on the fly, we had to essentially establish a newcomers program, and that is for students who join our community, who have limited to know English at all, as well as a SLIFE program. And a SLIFE is for students who have had an interruption in their education for more than a year and a half, two years. So, now, Newburyport, we have all five programs for L students, so we're very proud of that. As well as at the high school, Mrs. Piscios and Ms. Blackstock also created a peer monitor, peer group, and they went skating at the Graff Rink with our L students. So, the peer group invited the L students up at the high school to join them, and that was sponsored by Burnettty's Jewelers, who purchased the rink, the ice time, the skates, pizza, cake, soda, the whole thing. So, they had a wonderful time. And now we're in search for some donations of ice skates, because the students loved it so much that they want to have skates of their own, so they can skate more often. So, that was our agenda for our last SISL meeting. Our next SISL meeting is actually next week due to the break, and the subject will be the District Literacy Plan, as well as student voice, obviously. Great, any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Walker?
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. What are the, what sorts of metrics do we use for the English learners? What is the measurement tool or program that we're using to gauge their progress?
Excellent. So, any new L student who joins our community, they have a WIDA screener, it's called, and that measures their speaking, listening, reading, and speaking abilities, and it's on a gradient from one to five. And from there is how we place them into whether they're part of the newcomer program or what's called WIDA 1, WIDA 2, or WIDA 3. Usually, between three and five years of being in our L programs, most students graduate out, and they're considered what's called FLEP students, so former EL students, and they're under a monitor and watch. But what we also use is the state has, it's called access testing, which is very similar to MCAS testing, but it's only designed for our L population. So, we're actually expecting those scores by the end of May this year, and we're excited to see those. We've also done a lot of work in the L department, looking at consistency of curriculum and materials. So, we've recently purchased new curriculum for the L department that's developmentally appropriate for their grade levels. Because one thing that we found when we welcomed some of our newcomer students at the high school level, was that we were using materials that we're using K1, 2 with 19-year-olds, and that's just not appropriate at all. So, we found materials that gave us the same skills and objectives to look at, but was more developmentally appropriate for that age level, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Great. Always nice to see you all.
You too.
Just a comment, thank you for providing the SISL documents that we had at the meeting as part of our packet. It really helped, so it's just great to have them. Sorry, I was asleep at the switch.
Superintendent?
All right, just a few items to report on. First is our website and mass notification. As you all know, we've been working with Blackboard and really just expanding those services. So, right now, we're working with Blackboard, the new website provider, and they call it, and Mr. Callahan can probably talk more, because he's a little more tech savvy here, but.
I'm not prepared.
Incubation setup, so we're doing a lot of the work on the new website, but it's not live yet. We anticipate for the whole new website to go live in July, so we're excited about that. In addition, we'll have, what's really exciting for us, especially with communication, is that parents and students will have an app that they can download on their phones for easy access to calendars, announcements, news, and ice cream flavors for the lunch machine. Excited about that.
You'll have to take my login away, so I don't get rid of that page.
No, but I think that's gonna be really beneficial for our families, and, you know, the whole idea is for us to communicate a lot more with our families and make it easier, and really just upgrade our communication to, you know, 21st century here. So, having that app is gonna be really beneficial for everybody. In addition, as we move on, the NOC Mullen Assistant Principal. So, first of all, we made the announcement, Ms. Gargelos will be our Mullen Assistant Principal, and working with both Mr. Marcos and Ms. Rossi. So, we're taking those two positions, as I think I articulated to the school committee. So, the Mullen Assistant Principal will be doing grades four, five, and one team of six. And then the middle school Assistant Principal will be doing grade seven and eight, and one team of six. So, we're gonna split that. And I just think having Mr. Marcos and Ms. Rossi been working together, I think, for the past four years, that that team's really come together as an administrative team. So, I think that's gonna assist. As you all know. As you all know, Ms. Gaios is experienced educator with advanced degrees, some people may not know, in elementary reading literacy. And then she has our certifications in administration, trauma-informed practices, and youth mental health. So Ms. Rossi is really excited to have her join the team, and we're really happy to have her as a permanent staple within our leadership team. We have met with two finalists today for the NOC Assistant Principal position. They went through a comprehensive process where students had the opportunity for interviews. There's an interview and committee. So we're kind of in the final stages, and then hopefully by Wednesday, we'll have an announcement for that position. So we're excited about that, too. Just a quick little COVID update. We've kept the medical advisory meetings on the calendar, more for superstition, but Ms. McDonald and myself, we do talk, and we still are monitoring our cases. Our cases have gone up, not significantly, but I think with all the masks off. So as of last week, we had seven staff and 10 students that reported positive cases.
Total?
Yep, that's total. The good news for all of us is the vaccination rates at the Brezner Hand were 86% fully vaccinated. The Mullen is at 69%. NOC is at 75%, and the high school's at 84%. We also sent information on boosters, the fourth booster and other boosters. That email went out, and Ms. McDonald and our team will continue to let our school community know, you know, where and when, if they're interested in to getting the booster. And just the last piece is our recent art show that was here at the Senior Center. It was a great success. It's a great community event, and as you all know, it showcased art from the general art classes by student artists and pre-K to grade eight, and also artwork from NHS and the general arts ceramics, animation and photography classes. I'd also want to thank Mary Kelly of the Senior Center Activities Director that assisted us with this display, and she added a, a new little twist on that, where Senior Center members were invited to share short notes with students on what inspired them from their artwork, and that was really exciting. Also, we want to thank the NEF, whose generous support allowed us, you know, once again to have that display exhibited in the reception. And then obviously, our teachers for all of their hard work in organizing another successful event. And that's Kim Salate, Pam Jamison, Kristen Born, Ben Ober, A.J. Smith, Mary Urkowski, and Aileen McConie for all of their work with that. So we ended March on a wonderful note with the art exhibit. And that's, I think, covers my superintendent's report.
Yes.
Can you tell us, like, how many people applied for the Assistant NOC job? Do we have a good, good number of responses?
Yes, I think it was about, I think it was 32 candidates for that, and I believe they interviewed six to eight for the original round.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? New business? Ms. Walker?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just wanted to give a quick update on the ad hoc transportation committee that's been meeting. I think we talked about them last time, but I just thought I'd give a quick summary of some of the items that we're planning to talk about. And we are meeting next Monday at 5:00 to, to continue to talk. The, I think the overall purpose, we talked about last meeting, was, is to ultimately recommend a policy or some guidance to the Full School Committee in anticipation of decisions around bus fees. So I think our goal is, is to provide something, some sort of report back by September, maybe October of this year. We also have talked about, you know, evaluating sort of the pros and cons of district-supported transportation and the challenges, but also maybe what our objectives are overall as a program. There's been talk about doing a parent survey, and I know staff are trying to put together some questions we might ask to understand why students and families choose their transportation mode, not just bus, but broadly. And we are looking at overall school bus transportation costs and trends, understanding our legal requirements for what we provide and, and what we can, what we have to provide and what we can provide, understanding school bus operations. In fact, that is one of the topics of our next meeting, is to meet with SALT or Transportation and sort of understand the intricacies of routing and, and sort of what our contract basics are. We are reviewing bus fee structure and models from other districts. And I think the other thing that we briefly touched on maybe last time was also thinking about the traffic congestion around schools, other ways to get people to school and try to make it safer overall, so not just focus on bus transportation. And also thinking about potential collaboration opportunities, if possible, with other bus, other transportation providers such as MBRTA, although everybody's challenged in many ways. So, so those are just some of the highlights, and I appreciate the input at the last meeting.
Great, thank you for doing that work.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
So I have an update on meeting locations and times. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April 26th, a week later than normal because of the school vacation, and it will be in the library at Newburyport High School. We have determined that we can have a live stream from there, so it'll be available for people to watch as usual. But if anyone wants to attend, please come to the high school library on the 26th.
Same time or?
Same time, 6:30, yes. And the other change is our last meeting of the school year was originally scheduled for Monday, June 20th, which is now a national holiday, Juneteenth, observed, because it's on a Sunday this year. So that's been moved to Tuesday, June 21st, the very next night. And once again, Tuesday night, the Senior Center is not available, so that one will also be at 6:30 in the library at Newburyport High School. Any questions about that? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.